Do it.
Meeting called to order. Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star Ledger on January 3, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now into special event applications.
The first application is for the Santa Run on December 7. Nexus for Jersey Pride on June 4. Fourth of July fireworks. The Five Alarm 5K. The Senior Easter recon has been pulled off the agenda by the applicant. The Sexual Violence Awareness Month event held in Springwood Park on April 29. A graduation block party, June 3. Art in the Park on May 20. And we have two weddings, one on May 27 and the other on July 1. Are there any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Any questions?
Nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now to matters from City Council. Councilmember Abes Anderson.
Good evening, everyone, and I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman.
So I'm going to read everyone the results of our participatory budget project, and I want to thank everyone who voted. We had just under 900 votes. Thank everyone who helped pull this off, city, staff, committee. And I'm going to start at the top with the most votes, which was park benches, specifically art benches. So that was the number one project that was voted on. The second one is playground improvements in Sunset Lake Park. And I'm going to go down the whole list. We don't know how many of these projects we're going to be able to actually afford to do this year, but I'll read the list anyway. And we'll also be on our website tomorrow, Sonia. Okay. So the third one is Deal Lake improvements. The fourth was Dog Park in Library Square Park. The next one was St. John's Island Open Air Pavilion. The next was Dog Park Main Street and 7th Avenue. The next was boat ramps, launches, and docks. The next was outside exercise equipment. Next was playground improvements in Library Square Park. Then kayak storage racks, Dog Park, Springwood Avenue, bike repair station, fountains and statues, and park benches, standard benches. So again, thanks to everyone who helped support this project. That's all you.
Thank you, Councilmember Clayton.
Good evening. Just wanted to let you know that the Green Team is inviting you to an open information meeting at the library, and it's going to be on April 20, and it's about our water supply. So it's an opportunity to come and find out about our oceans, the lakes, and the importance of runoff. So again, that date is April 20. It's from 7:00 to 8:30, and it's at the Asbury Park Library.
That's it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
I want to thank everybody who participated in the participatory budget. You know, obviously Eileen, who was the lead on that. And you know, I should have had it handy, Donna, and I'm sure Sonia sent it to me, but I'm on spring break this week. The TNR thing we're doing with Monmouth County SPCA, any chance you remember it?
I'll tell you in one second.
Anyway, it's kitten season. We're getting tons of calls about kittens. We have a contract with Monmouth County SPCA to catch, neuter, and release. So just putting that on everybody's radar, you know, to, you know, contact Monmouth County SPCA. The city's paying for it anyway to...
Tuesday, April 25 at 6:00 PM at the library.
Monmouth County SPCA is coming to give a talk about the importance of spay and neutering our stray cats.
That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Moore.
Yeah, so do nixels and everything about that? About the library thing?
Yeah.
SPCA? That would be out there, the public will know.
I'm sure you sent it, Sonia, but we're all on spring break this week, so...
Yeah, it's not for another... It'll be next week, so...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure...
It's a little early to remind people now.
The only thing I have, again, is the same as Amy said, thank you, everybody, for submitting a proposal. Everybody's a winner. Eileen, thank you for starting this. The first year is always the hardest, so...
It was.
From here on out, I'm sure it'll be easier. And congratulations to everybody who participated. Thank you.
Teamwork. Thank you. Matters from the city manager?
I have nothing, Lisa.
Thank you. Matters from the city attorney?
Yes, thank you, Lisa. On behalf of the mayor and council, I'd like to take this opportunity to make a statement concerning the new fire department headquarters project and the hearing that was held at a special council meeting on March 28. By way of background, the city of Asbury Park received and opened sealed bids for the new fire department headquarters on Wednesday, February 22. Ten bids were received on that date from interested contractors. On February 27, the mayor and council held a special council meeting in order to award the bid associated with this matter. The lowest bid had been submitted by Wallace Brothers, Inc., with an address of 400 Chambers Ridge Road, Brick, New Jersey. At that meeting, the mayor and council adopted Resolution Number 2023-144, which awarded the bid and contract for the project to Wallace Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $18,084,000, representing the base bid and deducting alternate number one and alternate number two. Shortly after the special meeting was held, the city was made aware of certain allegations and information which may have affected the determination made by the mayor and council that Wallace Brothers, Inc. represented the lowest responsible bidder for the project. Pursuant to the New Jersey Local Public Contracts Law, every contract for the provision or performance of any goods or services, the cost of which exceeds the contracting unit's bid threshold, must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. This contract well exceeds the city's bid threshold; therefore, it must be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. The Local Public Contracts Law defines the term "responsible" as "responsible" means able to complete the contract in accordance with its requirements, including but not limited to requirements pertaining to experience, moral integrity, operating capacity, financial capacity, credit, workforce, equipment, and facilities availability." That definition was also included as part of the city's bid specifications. With regard to the allegations that were made concerning the low bidder, Wallace Brothers, Inc., the city was provided with certain information from other bidders, as well as from labor union representatives, who filed protests following the award of the bid to Wallace. A number of issues were raised. However, the specific issue that caused the mayor and council to conduct the hearing held on March 28 related to the responses provided by Wallace to several questions listed on the statement of experience and qualifications included in its bid package. Those questions dealt with, number one, whether in the past three years Wallace had any outstanding debts owed to subcontractors for more than 60 days on any of its jobs, and number two, whether in the past three years any liens had been placed on any of Wallace's projects. Wallace answered no to both of those questions. However, the information that was provided to the city following the award of the bid suggested that these responses may not have been accurate and/or may have constituted misrepresentations. The mayor and council believed that these issues were material and were relevant to the determination as to whether Wallace constituted the lowest responsible bidder under the New Jersey Local Public Contracts Law. Therefore, before proceeding with contract execution, the mayor and council determined to set the matter down for a hearing in order to allow a representative of Wallace to explain under oath Wallace's responses to those questions. In the meantime, Wallace was directed not to proceed with any activities concerning the firehouse project until this matter had been resolved. The hearing concerning these issues was conducted at a special council meeting held on March 28 at 12:00 noon. At that hearing, Mr. Steve Wallace, who was the president of Wallace Brothers, Inc., came forward along with his attorney to respond to questioning from representatives of the city. Mr. Wallace was sworn in before responding. Between the written submissions made by Wallace, both in anticipation of and after the hearing, as well as the testimony provided under oath at the hearing, the following information was brought forward. Wallace Brothers, Inc. has been in business since 1986, or for approximately 37 years. Wallace Brothers, Inc. is in active business and good standing in the state of New Jersey, and its annual reports are current. Wallace has represented that it has never failed to complete a project and has never defaulted on payments to any subcontractor or supplier. With that having been said, there was clearly a discrepancy between Wallace and the city as to the interpretation of the term "debt" relating to outstanding payments to subcontractors as set forth in the bid specs. Prior to the hearing, the city had been made aware of the fact that on one of Wallace's prior jobs involving the Ocean County College Performing Arts Academy, Wallace had been sued by several subcontractors who claimed they had not been paid for materials supplied and/or for work completed for substantial periods of time, notwithstanding the fact that demands had been made for payment following the delivery of the goods or performance of the work. Wallace responded before the mayor and council that in each of those circumstances disputes had arisen with the subcontractors as to the quality of work performed and/or concerning defects, damage, or deficiencies which caused Wallace to withhold payment. Thus, according to Wallace, this was the appropriate course of action to withhold payment until the defects and/or disputes were resolved. In those circumstances, Wallace stated that he did not consider the amounts claimed by the subcontractors to constitute a debt as the work was considered to have been defective, and the amount owed was in dispute. As such, according to Wallace, payment was withheld and was not technically due under the terms of the contract. Wallace also stated that in the construction world disputes over performance and deficiencies are common. In addition, Wallace testified that his company is not on the state's debarred list and that his company is not connected in any way with another entity that is on the state's debarred list, known as Wallace General Contracting LLC of Hamilton, New Jersey. Moreover, though there are several matters that are currently pending before the State Department of Labor involving Wallace Brothers, Inc., those matters have not yet been adjudicated, and therefore, the claims made in those cases have not yet been substantiated, and they cannot be considered. Wallace submitted, among other things, a letter from Liberty Mutual Surety Company of Pennsylvania with favorable recommendation, including the fact that Liberty Mutual has never paid any claims out under the many performance and payment bonds which it has issued on their behalf for their prior public projects. Wallace also presented letters from representatives of the Ocean County Vocational Technical School and the Borough of Manaloking, both of which provided positive feedback as to their prior involvement with Wallace. Additionally, the city performed further due diligence and obtained positive feedback from other public entities that have worked with Wallace in the past, including but not limited to the Brick Township Board of Ed, the Point Pleasant Borough School District, the Bayhead School District, the Township of Berkeley, and the Lakewood Township Board of Fire Commissioners, in which Wallace Brothers, Inc. constructed a new firehouse approximately 15 years ago, and then subsequently performed renovations to the firehouse more recently to accommodate the facility for greatly increased staffing. According to the Lakewood Fire Chief, there were not any issues with either project, and Wallace came in on time and within budget on both projects. As with the question concerning debts to subcontractors, there was also a difference of interpretation relating to the term "lean" as utilized in the bid specs. Wallace answered no to the question as to whether any liens had ever been placed on any prior projects with which it had been involved over the last three years. However, the city found that certain subcontractors had, in fact, apparently filed mechanics liens concerning the Ocean County Performing Arts Project. In response, Wallace represented that his interpretation of the term "lean" does not include mechanics liens, as the filing of mechanics liens on construction projects is extremely common, and also that he may not have been made aware of the mechanics liens filings on that project. In the end, despite the litigation that had been filed by the three subcontractors concerning that project, including the apparent filing of mechanics liens, all of those disputes were resolved, and payments were ultimately made to the subcontractors, whether in the original amounts or in some amount that was negotiated between the parties. Mr. Wallace recognized before the mayor and council that, in hindsight, perhaps he should have answered the two questions in its bid proposal differently, and that he likely would have done so if completing the bid proposal anew. However, he maintained that he had not made any intentional misrepresentations to the city. In written submissions provided to the city, Wallace stated that he does not discriminate between union and non-union subcontractors, and that his company intends to perform the work on the Asbury Park Firehouse project with both union and non-union labor. In that regard, in a post-hearing submission made by his attorney, the following representation was made. Quote, "Wallace Brothers sought out the best prices for the project and does not discriminate against union subcontractors. I have not calculated the value of the union contracts, but I am guessing, based on the trades, that union workers will make up a significant amount of labor on the project." Following the March 28 hearing and the review of the pre and post-hearing submissions made by Wallace, as well as by other parties, a majority of the city council has determined that, though they were troubled by Wallace's responses to the two questions on the statement of experience and qualifications, a majority of the council is not of the mindset to rescind the award of the bid over an alleged difference of interpretation over various terms in the bid specs and potentially subject the city to litigation, which could delay this much-needed project for an indefinite and potentially extended period of time. Additionally, the majority of the council is satisfied with the representations made by city staff members and professionals to the effect that Wallace possesses the requisite experience and capability to complete the project. Therefore, a majority of the council has determined to proceed with the course of action originally contemplated with the adoption of Resolution Number 2023-144. As such, city officials will now move forward with contract execution and all other activities associated with the construction of the new fire department headquarters, utilizing Wallace Brothers, Inc. as the contractor for the project. With that, Mayor, I'll turn this back to you and the council members in case any of you would like to make any final comments concerning this matter.
Thank you. I have nothing at this time. Does anybody want to be heard?
I'm going to say a couple of things. So first, I just want to... This is one of the biggest projects, I think, that we've awarded since we've been on the council, and I completely understand the logic of keeping the award with Wallace. However, that... I don't support that. So two questions Mr. Wallace lied about on the application. We had a hearing in the hopes to clarify. His answers on those applications and his answers remained nebulous. My seven-year-old could tell you about debts and liens, but Mr. Wallace, a man in construction for 50 years, had a drastically different definition of debt and liens than any I've ever heard. He then told us we were going to be flooded with emails vindicating his position on these subcontractors. We weren't. We were not flooded with any emails that vindicated anything. The Department of Labor has ongoing investigations, so when we say they haven't been adjudicated, it's simply because the investigation is going on, not because it's been decided and he's innocent in any way. The investigations continue. So while I completely understand a majority of the council in moving forward, we absolutely need a firehouse, I don't support the award for Wallace.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Yes, I would. Mayor, thank you. Also, piggybacking off of Councilmember Quinn, I am not in favor of Wallace for the simple fact that when you apply for a position, and if you lie on your application, and it's discovered that you have lied, you're going to be terminated. And so I believe that Wallace misrepresented themselves. And when we had the hearing, I asked a question if you did not understand the question, the debt, or the lean you did have counsel that you could have referred to. So because they misrepresented themselves, I am not in favor of awarding the contract. Thank you.
Yeah, and so I have to agree with both the deputy mayor and councilwoman. I asked specific questions about debts and got answers that were laughable. I also feel a little concerned about this project moving forward, but in all good conscience, I can hold up a new firehouse from being built. Our firemen are in substandard accommodations right now, and if this were to go to court, it could hold the project up indefinitely, and I can't see our firemen remaining in their accommodations any longer than necessary. So for the good of the city, I will support this project moving forward.
I also voted in favor of the project. I voted in favor of the project for basically the same reasons as Eileen, didn't want to hold the project up, and also based on the comments from our staff that when they went out and they talked to previous projects completed by this particular contractor, the answers were, "He did a good job. He completed the jobs, he came in on budget, and they were pleased with the projects." And these are, again, in the same vein as our existing projects. They were large projects, around $20 million. Based on that characterization of who he was and that he has been doing quality work, the firehouses that he has built, the people who are using them were pleased. That's why I voted positive, to let this go forward. Thank you.
And it's easy to figure out. If it passed three to two, the guy voted yes, and so that's no big mystery. And I agree with Yvonne. It was because of staff members, it was because of research, it was because of his past performance, and all I'm doing is hoping for the best, so thank you.
Thank you. We're now into the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. In light... By the way, I really enjoyed that discussion, that presentation that just went on there. We seldom get to see the council members having a healthy disagreement or agreement on any topic, and I appreciate that you all shared that with me, with us. And in light of the fact that it wasn't unanimous, I might suggest that you really get on top of the code department and keep on top of this project as it's going on, so that we don't have any snafus here in Asbury Park. We have seen lax code enforcement on the waterfront, and I don't want to see this happen again with a project as important as Councilwoman Chapman says, as this firehouse. So maybe they would even appoint someone special to oversee this enormous, important project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam, and totally agree, but I'm going to disagree with code. This is a construction department, and our engineer department, and our architect making sure everything's done as per specs, as per the architectural plans, as per cost, as per everything, and, believe me, that was a concern of all of ours, and it was well spelled out to the administration that that is not a want, that's gotta be done. So many sense of eyes are going to be on this project as we move forward. Thank you. Rita?
Rita Morano, 8th Avenue. There was one thing left out of what Fred read. Didn't say you had to hire local people. It just said union workers. So that's another thing. I want to talk about the water park, which I know a lot about. When it went up, I was right there. It was supposed to cost $800,000. Cost $1 million. Went overruns. But that's what I'm here to talk about. They're knocking it down at a bid. That's what the city manager said, anyway, because she didn't have to go out to bid. Why not? Why didn't she have to go out to bid? Because she hired workers that aren't from the city. One is from Edison, and I don't know where the other one is from. Each one of those poles that they knocked down cost $8,000. I don't know if they were working or not, but the water park should have people from the community. It doesn't take much to knock a building down or pipes down, and anybody in the city could have did it that was unemployed. You have to remember what the unemployment rate is here, 33%. And also, the black population has gone down just about the same. And you're wondering why? There's a lot going on here that you don't know about. You have to pay attention to those little things, like watching who the city manager hires, for one thing. She went out to the state... Of course, all those people on that list are Democratic donors. Of course, they're going to pick one of those. Why don't you pick somebody from the community and see if they could do the work? If they can't do it, that's another story. But you try. Try to get people here, because you're building up a very bad situation. When they see foreigners working in this city, everybody gets upset because the Americans aren't working, and that's got to stop. Really? You're creating a very bad atmosphere. And why are we knocking down the water park? We have the Atlantic Ocean there. My kids grew up in the Atlantic Ocean. It's not even that far away. The kids that go to the water park should be going to the beach and having fun and building sandcastles and going on the ride there, the little playground. They shouldn't be put way back there. You shouldn't even be wasting your money on that. The water used to go down the drain. We told them that. They said, "Well, it was too expensive to do the recycling." Now, they're going to do recycling. I think it's wrong that the city manager goes to the state list, and even when she goes, which she mentioned, Malouf Ford. I happen to know them personally. They're all donors for a party, and you shouldn't be picking people like that. You should be picking them from here, from Asbury Park. You should have a list of people...
Okay, okay. Your time's up, Rita.
I want an answer to that. Why are we hiring people from out of town? Went out of bid! And how much is it?
Okay, Rita, your time's up. Okay, so I'm going to answer part of it. If Donna wants to answer, fine, because I don't know what you're talking about half the time. When she hired people, I mean, did we...
You talked a little louder.
Do we take people off a state contractor's list? Yes. Is it legal? Yes. I don't know if they're Democrat, Republicans, Communists, whatever, but they got the credentials. And to take any project, be it the firehouse, the water spray park, and say, "Well, we're going to hire A company to do this, B company to do this, C company to do this, D company to do this, E company to do this," the project will never get done. You hire one company to do the project. So that's why the guy that got the job to replace the water park, which was old and falling apart and needed to be replaced, as much as you don't think it's needed on the southwest section, I would say the majority of the town will disagree with you. There used to be a public swimming pool that was there. That fell apart. So back in... Again, I was working for the city. I didn't agree with some of the way the water park was built then, but I'm guessing around 2005 or so, the water park was put there. It's very successful, and you go there on a hot day, and the kids love it and have a great time, and it's a success. So now, as far as what you're saying, as far as Donna, I have no idea. So Donna, if you want to address that, I don't care.
Yeah, I think, Rita... Well, I don't think. I know that you misunderstood me when we had our conversation. So as the mayor alluded to, under the public purchasing laws, the city of Asbury Park, as well as every other municipality in the state, can only purchase or procure items several ways. One of those ways is through a state contract. So the state of New Jersey has a list of vendors that we can purchase: water park equipment, vehicles, that was your Malouf comment, tables and chairs, et cetera. When we do this, we don't have to go through the bid process. And to the mayor's point, it expedites the ability for the city to procure items and get things done. So that is why the city of Asbury Park, in this instance, used the state contract to fix the water park. When I first came here, COVID hit. That summer, we had the water park on in hopes to get some children socially distanced, but give them the ability to cool off. Unfortunately, the way the water park was working is the water ran continuously, regardless if there was someone under the faucet or not. So the city of Asbury Park had an open water faucet for many, many weeks. That was just wasting water. So that is why the water park, amongst other reasons, is being renovated this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to be watching that money closely.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, George Stevens, Bangs Avenue. When you said all the guy was going to hire local guys, union guys, I should say, are anyone going to keep an eye on him? Because we have seen, heard him tell stories, even as far as all his debt was paid yesterday, but he also said that he cut it in half. And a lot of times, I've been doing this for like 30 years, they cut it in half because the other small company can't last to keep going to court. So why'd he cut it? I don't know if you remember, he said it was $12,000 and $20,000, and they brought it down to $6,000. That's the way he cut. That's the way he come on the budget, is nipping the small guys. So I wanted to know, is anyone going to keep an eye on him with the union guys?
Yes, as much as possible. And we're taking his lawyer's letter to us as, hey, guy, you put this in writing, we expect you to be a man of your word, and you represent your client with this letter to us, saying like, you know, he intended to hire, I don't want to misquote it, Fred read it.
It said a significant amount of labor.
Yes. I have a brother-in-law, nephew, and friends at the fires. I don't want to held up either. But I was just wondering what was going to happen there.
Okay, yeah. But it's a concern. Thank you.
Juan Cito Jones, 1222, on Mungo Avenue. My thing is, the man, I remember the man said before, and y'all asked the question, that he wanted to say anything to the city. He declined and said that the people from the city is biased, and he don't want to speak to us. And as I walked outside, one of his lawyers said to me, well, we got the contract, as we walked by, as I walked by. So all I have to say.
Well, that's news to me, and thank you for sharing it. Anybody else like to be heard? Diana, I see you're hesitating. Motion to...
Hi, my name's Joe. I live at 1606 Sewell Avenue, here representing the Surf Rider Foundation, a volunteer organization that helps to protect our coast. We sponsor Family Day in Asbury Park. We're here to discuss trying to open the casino beach in Asbury Park to surfing. It's a piece of beach that nobody currently uses. On the north side, we have our surfing beach, which summertime surf, thankfully, is very successful, and it's gotten very crowded up there. And we're trying to alleviate a safety issue, particularly given that surfing is such a part of Asbury Park in terms of local businesses and also in terms of its community impact. Part of our Family Day, the surf lessons that we give, we work with local organizations that also give surf lessons to kids that live out by me out on the west side. And as part of that, the Boys and Girls Club has started a swimming program that's completely sold out, that gives kids motivation and teaches them to swim and to be able to use the ocean. So hopefully, people will be interested and people will consider helping us out.
Thank you.
Are you talking about the same subject, or?
Yeah, I'm speaking about two things about water, but I was going to follow up to see if you had any.
Okay, well, that's why I figured I'd wait till you're done then answer.
Okay. I don't really have anything to add. I'm Diana Bittet. I live on 321 Sunset Avenue. And happy spring, everybody. I'm here to talk about two water issues. Thank you, Yvonne, for mentioning the water story meeting that's happening at the library on April 20th at 7:00 PM. I just wanted to flesh it out a little bit more. I'm on the green team in Asbury Park, and we've been compiling a living document, looking at all aspects of water in Asbury Park. So looking at access to water and for recreation, like maybe having access to the beach for surfing on the south end of Asbury Park. Also looking at stormwater management, storm flooding, storm, so wastewater management, stormwater management, looking at issues of flooding, and drinking water as well. And we can't tell the full story of water in Asbury Park and all possible issues and problems with it unless we also get communities coming, everyone here coming in and giving their two cents to the story and contributing to the story of water. So we hope to see you at the library. And then, yes, I, and now switching to the beach on the south end of Asbury Park, I would love to see that open up to surfing. I know there's, I think there's concerns about a pipe that's there, but surfers have been surfing there safely for a long time, and it's visible at all tide levels. In addition, other municipalities of similar size, so Long Branch and Spring Lake, they also have an area for surf lessons, as well as an area for experienced surfers. One, to sort of alleviate crowding, which then also makes for a safer situation. And in addition, mall just about trying to increase access to the beach, and it's a precious spot, so why not open it up to surfing? Because it's already, nine months out of the year, people are already surfing there.
Okay, thank you. A quick thing, and the water thing, and Yvonne, you're all on the green team. Michelle's on it. At the last meeting, Eileen and myself gave Michelle, where you guys adopt a storm drain. We gave her a couple of storm drains that are totally illegal. They're not even stamped. Drains to the lake, you know, they don't have the sticker on anything. So if you guys could pick up the pace there, I support you. We gave you the locations, they haven't been fixed yet. That's not you. Michelle's on vacation.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so you can point out those locations again. Let's go to the surfing beach. So obviously, you talked to John Weber this afternoon. John Weber's head of Surf Rider, I don't...
John Weber, yeah, he's on, he's a council member in Bradley Beach, but he's also a paid member of Surf Rider to coordinate and look over all the chapters of Surf Rider from Virginia Beach to Eastern Long Island.
Right, I know he's Northeast Director, so I just don't want to have his title on the hall. And he couldn't be here tonight because they have their council meetings on Wednesday nights also, so no problem. He got in touch with me, I'm going to say, beginning of March, and to talk to me about this. And I wanted to talk to administration, both city manager, beach personnel, beach director, safety director, everybody. I wanted to talk to council. So I shot him back a text message or an email on March 23rd. Hey, John, give me a call when you get a chance. He texts me, yes, when you're going to call me back. I said, well, check your emails. I sent it March 23rd. So we talked today. The problem, and it wasn't like, you know, 1%, 9%, 10%, it was 100%. Nobody in the city, from administration to beach supervisor to anybody, including the entire council, is for, and this has been, this is brought up two years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago. I asked John, like, why should Asbury Park have two surf beaches when some towns don't even have one? And his answer made no sense to me. Well, Asbury Park's the most popular town. I'm like, well, that sounded good answer. I mean, the main concern is the safety issue. There is the downfall pipe there. There is the downfall pipe there. And experienced surfers like you know it's there and know to avoid it. But if we made that a surfing beach, number one, we'd have to hire more lifeguards, which we have a problem finding enough to man our beaches right now. So it's a monetary cost. We're not going to pick up any more money because you all have season badges. But when somebody comes down from Paramus and goes surfing there for the first time and heads their head on this downfall pipe, then we're looking at a multimillion-dollar lawsuit. So again, it wasn't like a Moors against it, Quinn's against it, Don's against it. The entire city, from staff to council, was 100% against it. I said, John, like, you know, I don't see any sense in having a meeting because we've gone through this at least three times that I know of in the past, and the answer is still the same answer. If you got a short follow-up question, I'll let you go because you raised your hand, you were polite, so.
Sure, it's just a couple of things. We have fewer surfing beaches than any other town our size in Monmouth County.
Do what?
We have fewer surfing beaches than any town our size in Monmouth County. Every beach has at least, if there's a surf school, a beach for the surf school and a beach for surfing. And then for the water pipe, it's above the water, it's right next to a jetty, and it's about this tall. It's not like someone's going to not see that it's there. Like, you'd have to intentionally surf into it. And the way New Jersey surfing works, you go north when you surf. It's, in a lot of ways, you'd have to try to hit it.
Well, okay. And if you could give me that information in an email, John, like, every other town has at least one surfing beach, because, does Lock Harbor?
Lock Harbor, you could surf all five houses in Lock Harbor all day.
Okay. I mean, that's a better break there than I think the casino.
Part of the, so part of the issue is that when the beach replenishment work was done, Lock Harbor found a syndial, that the surf break itself was, I mean, for lack of a better term, surf break was destroyed. So the people that were surfing in the next three towns up all have come down to Asbury Park and now are surfing. So there's about five times as many people surfing in the same amount of space. And we saw that there's an empty piece of beach that we're not even, we're not even asking for lifeguards on.
But we'd have to put lifeguards there. We'd have to put a ticket taker there. We'd have to put a gate guard there. We'd have to put everything there. We can't just say, here, everybody go in the water, and there's no protection. We'll get sued.
Sure. And hopefully, we can just turn that into a longer discussion. We're looking to say, you had an initial discussion, we're working on gathering information. Hopefully, we can just sit down and talk through, you know, some of your questions. Maybe we can address, maybe there's things that we can do to help you out, to help solve those problems.
Okay, thank you.
And one tactic, having also spoken to John Weber, since he is a council member in Bradley Beach, kind of pioneering this issue, he could extend Bradley Beach's surfing beach, or we, he and I talked about doing it on the other, I mean, Bradley Beach has a small surfing beach that John and I talked about extending that one and putting some resources into that. I assume that's still on the table, right?
Well, I mean, I surf in Asbury Park, so Bradley Beach is two towns down. What we're looking to do is connect Ocean Rose Surfing Beach. And, but Bradley Beach has a surfing beach. It also has a beach where summertime operates their surf school, which are at different parts of town.
So Bradley Beach is not at all looking to extend their surf beach at all?
I can't, I mean, I live here.
Okay. Just an option.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Is that a motion to close?
Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion is now closed. We're now on to the minutes. I have the municipal council executive session minutes and regular meeting minutes from the March 22nd meeting. And, oh, and I also have the executive meeting minutes and special meeting minutes of the March 28th special meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to the city council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2023-180 through 2023-182. Where 2023-180 is a resolution approving special event applications, and Deputy Mayor Quinn will be abstaining from the Art in the Park application. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2023-183, resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-184, resolution authorizing purchase of body armor vests for the police department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-185, a resolution authorizing the repairs to the 2016 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor vehicle number 14.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-186, a resolution awarding contract to commercial recreation specialists for the purchase and installation of equipment for the water spray park and exercise equipment area with community development block grant, CDVG funding.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-187, a resolution awarding bid for school bus transportation services for the 2023 recreation program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-188, a resolution authorizing the annual renewal of SDL software.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-189, resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-190, a resolution authorizing the county of Monmouth Mosquito Control Division to conduct an aerial mosquito control operations within the city of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes. I think it's the first time it's passed in 10 years.
Fifteen.
And they're going to do it no matter what we say, so.
Resolution 2023-191, a resolution authorizing withdrawal from membership in the Central Jersey Health Insurance Fund.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-192, resolution of support authorizing a New Jersey Department of Transportation Local Aid Infrastructure Fund grant application.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-193, a resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Asbury Park to enter into a second amendment of the subsequent developer agreement with K. Habnadian's Baltic at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC and K. Habnadian's Aegean at Asbury Park Urban Renewal LLC to extend the outside approvals date in connection with the development of property located at Block 4003, lots 1, 2, and 16, and Block 4003, lots 12, 13, and 14.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-194, resolution of the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey, confirming the endorsement of the 1012 Asbury Project as a community development project.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-195, a resolution endorsing home funding application for 1012 Asbury Avenue, Block 501, lots 1 and 2.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
No.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-196 has been removed from tonight's agenda. We are now on to ordinances. I have ordinances for introduction, ordinance 2023-16, and ordinance designating a portion of Emory Street as a one-way street within the city of Asbury Park with a public hearing date of April 26, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-17, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park approving and adopting a redevelopment plan for property located at 1012 Asbury Avenue, Block 501, lots 1 and 2, with a public hearing date of April 26, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-19, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing amending and supplementing chapter eight entitled Taxi Cabs, Livery's, Petty Cabs and Valet Parking to repeal article, I wanna say, two?
Two.
Petty cabs of the code of the city of Asbury Park, uh, with a public hearing date of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
What numbers is?
This is ordinance for introduction twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
Correct, okay.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
No.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We are now on to public hearings and second readings, um, twenty twenty-three ten. We have the twenty twenty-three cap rate ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to provide a?
Lisa, I think I have to table, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three nineteen. Um, I have, it's not listed on the.
That was full?
Oh, okay. My bad, I had it all agenda, I apologize.
Donna, you wanna give a brief explanation of the cap?
I think our CFO has, has joined us tonight.
I'm sorry, Joanne.
She sat through the meeting. I'd be happy to, but we'd rather hear from our great CFO.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying.
Okay, this ordinance is, uh, required by the state of New Jersey every time to do our budget each year. We're allowed a two and a half increase, coal increase, uh, cost of living to prior year's operating budget amounts. And then to increase it another one percent to three and a half percent, we're required to do this ordinance every year. So in essence, we could increase our operating budget from the prior year to, um, where's the number on here? It's the four fifty, for another four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the one percent and the two percent, two and a half percent was one point one two seven. And that's the maximum we can increase our operating budget to.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to?
I have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three ten.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three ten is now open. Uh, if you wish to make a comment on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten only, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten is now closed. Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now into ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Ordinance vacating an unnamed alleyway measuring fifteen feet wide located west of Dunluee Street between blocks nineteen oh four and nineteen oh five, as shown on sheet nineteen of the official tax map of the city of Asbury Park. Would someone like to provide?
I'll do it. So this is the vacation of a fifteen-foot alley that the city has determined we have no longer use for. Uh, the vacation will be, uh, put on the, uh, tax rolls. Uh, half of it will be on lot nineteen oh five, lot one, and the other portion on nineteen oh five, lot three.
Thank you. I may have a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three eleven.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, public hearing on twenty twenty-three eleven is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And your comments must be on ordinance twenty twenty-three eleven only. Go ahead.
Yep, yeah, you're good.
Right, can roll, Rita. Why are we giving the alleyway away? Are they bothering anybody?
The city hasn't used it in years, and it's a burden to the city to try to cut it or plow.
Are you charging the people on both sides?
Nobody would make an offer for it.
What?
Nobody made an offer for it.
What does that mean?
Nobody would pay us a dollar for it. So they'll both get half of it, and their taxes will go up a little bit because now it's taxable. It's coming off the untaxable onto taxable, even though it's fifteen feet by, like, say, forty feet. I mean, you're talking about, like, less than a hundred dollars probably. But the city hasn't used it in years. I didn't know it was an alleyway. Nobody knew it was an alleyway. We've never plowed it. We've never done anything to it. It's just a piece of property that just sits there and is brought to our attention. Hey, what are you guys gonna ever do with this piece of property?
Yeah, well, how about telling us what street it is, too?
Dunluee.
West of Dunluee Street. Then sheet nineteen tells you something. I mean, like, why don't you just put the street?
Located west of Dunluee Street.
Block number nineteen oh, come on. Nobody, don't you want anybody to know where it is?
It's, it's in between Dunluee and Prospect.
There's a map.
There's a map, there's block and lots, what, uh, what other information?
There's a map attached to the ordinance, and this was introduced two weeks ago. So this, questions could have been asked in between.
I didn't realize the alleyways were so important now. This one's unnamed, so what? What does that make it?
Just because.
I mean, like, you think that the alleyways are important?
No, this, this piece of property isn't important to the city.
Oh, it's important to the city, right. Now, there's a lot, you do easements like crazy on the beachfront. Free, not paid. They get, they get the man.
You're straying from the subject, and I disagree with you, but you're straying from the subject. We're just talking about twenty twenty-three.
They should put the streets here. We're not stupid.
But we should put a street for the fifteen by forty alleyway?
Sheet nineteen, then you go to five ditch something? Come on.
Rita, there's maps all over the place. It's fifteen feet.
They should come here and sit here all day.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. Um, I've spoken out against giving away these alleyways for twenty years now. And as a result of listening to the participatory budget submissions, I think this is an ideal kind of piece of property that the city owns. You could make it into a small dog park. You could put a swing set in it. You could make it a community area instead of giving it away. I think you should listen to some of those participatory budget applications that didn't win, but you already own this land, use it for a playground or a small dog park. I saw one in Philadelphia, a dog park that was about five feet wide and two hundred feet long. They, they take every little piece of property and they use it for community.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead. And I've never seen a dog park between two houses, which are fifteen feet. I could reach out and touch both houses. I've never seen a dog park in my life that way. So maybe, 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 I might have.
Don't let that stop you.
If you had said maybe a garden or something like that, I might have said, oh, that makes sense. For a dog park fifteen feet wide, again, come on, I'm, I'm not in the NBA, but my wingspan is, like, you know. And you got a house on.
I don't mean a small park for dogs. I mean a small dog park.
I know what you mean, but again.
They're little dogs, they just need a little park.
Would you want that next to your house?
A small dog park, sure.
Okay, well.
All right, how about a garden? I just hate to see you giving, giving it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anybody else like to be heard?
I'd second the idea of garden there. I think it's a nice idea. I would never want to think that, um, somebody would.
I'm sorry, you gotta give your name.
Oh, sorry, Jenna Manning, Ten Deal Lake Court.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, a garden would be a nice thing, but to put a dog park next to somebody's home, I think would be a horrible suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? Motion to close.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three eleven is now closed. Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three eleven.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Nope.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three twelve, the twenty twenty-two transportation update ordinance with the public hearing date that was originally scheduled for today, April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, has been rescheduled for a public hearing at the April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. An adequate notice of this change was provided to the Asbury Park press on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We are now on to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, which is an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing section five dash four entitled Rules and Regulations of Chapter Five, Beach Boardwalk and Beachfront Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, this ordinance, uh, changes the, uh, regulations regarding umbrellas and shade devices on the beach. This allows for umbrellas with a center shaft and ninety-degree canopy no larger than six feet in diameter, as well as a three-foot high by four-foot wide, um, what they call baby tent. All other, um, tents and canopies will not be permitted on the beach.
Thank you. I may have a motion, motion to open the public hearing on twenty twenty-three thirteen.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody like to be heard? Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three thirteen?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending and supplementing subsection four dash twenty-seven point four entitled Application of Section four dash twenty-seven Film and Photography Permits of Chapter Four, General Licensing of the Code of the City of Asbury Park. Uh, it is my understanding that the mayor and city council may wish to table this, and if so, may have a motion to table to the May tenth meeting, so a public.
No, 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 not May tenth. Why?
Oh, Lisa said we have a ton of ordinances on that other meeting.
So, I mean, this is supposed to be on tonight's meeting.
Correct. So.
It's up to you, yeah.
No, April twenty-sixth, or move something else. If you wanna, like, get rid of something, move one tonight's. We've had four weeks to read this, so.
Okay, so motion to table with a public hearing date of April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. I may have a motion to table?
Move to table.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. And if anyone has anything else, we're on to adjournment. Someone like big motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
Everyone. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.